Pre-order the dates.
Four, seven?
I guess it's Friday.
Oh.
I've talked to you.
I want to do that. Who's it for?
It's for the.
Okay. Oh, okay, I got you. Oh, yes, 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 yes. Yes. Yes, I have this. You got some moves?
I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terrapini is absent and excused. Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Bob Russell of All Family of Faith Church. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Almighty God, tonight we come to you, asking to bless this meeting. As we gather here in the chambers of our city hall, we ask that you provide wisdom and leadership towards the needs of our fair city. We ask that you provide patience to those seeking guidance and information. A special blessing tonight, Father, for protection of our local, state, and national police force, and to soften the heart of those who are out to either injure or kill our law enforcement men and women. May further bless those who provide services within our city, our engineers, our maintenance folks, city hall staff, water department, waste removal, environmental department. We further ask that you protect and bless our first responders, our fire department, EMS. Please bless, keep safe, the members of our armed forces, and especially those families bereaving with the total sacrifice given to protect the freedoms that we so take for granted. We ask that you bless and guide our state officials, our national leaders, and especially our President, as he lives each day with such demanding responsibilities. Thank you, Father, for allowing us to live in this great country, and we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would now go to public comments on any item that would not be discussed this evening. Go forward, state your name and address for the record.
Todd Eckhaus, one oh three South Spring Boulevard, Tarpon Springs. I swear I did not speak to this minister before this meeting. Kind of amazing, but I just wanted to say, we live in a society that seems to be more and more influenced by political correctness. This has become a doctrine through which an honest, through which open and honest communication has become almost impossible. Without the ability to employ honest discourse, society can't even begin to solve difficult issues. It seems that those who violate this destructive doctrine do so at their own peril. Perhaps the most unfairly affected institution is law enforcement. I'd like to suggest that the commission consider memorializing their proud support of our law enforcement officers. I'm not sure how exactly that would be done, but, you know, maybe it could be through the erection of some attractive signage. I, for one, support our police department, and I don't think any police officer should have to worry about going to prison just for doing their job. So I'd like for you all to give that some thought.
Are you?
Peter Lakkas, five one four Ashland Avenue. It's, I don't know, I kind of, I don't know if it's ironic or symbolic that the Reverend here spoke last time and gave the eulogy and, or, you know, the benediction or the early prayer. And at that time, I came and spoke in regards to Allison Parker and Adam Webb. And since then, I've decided I needed to do something myself. So I contacted Congress Bill O'Rakus's office, telling him we need to start doing something about some of the things that have been proposed. Got a very stock letter saying, well, if we can find some way to work together with protecting gun rights, blah, 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 NRA, Republican, don't vote for that type attitude. I contacted Senator Nelson's office. I got a little more positive response. In fact, they sent me a packet Congressional Research Service, gun control legislation in one hundred and thirteenth Congress. And I'm just gonna go over one section here. In the immediate aftermath of Newtville, on December twentieth, two thousand and twelve, President Barack Obama established a task force on gun violence under the leadership of Vice President Joseph Biden. On January sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, the White House released a document entitled, "Now is the Time the Precedents Plan to Protect Our Children and Our Communities by Reducing Gun Violence." This plan included eighteen legislative proposals and twenty-three executive actions. Some of those legislative proposals include the following: requiring background checks for private firearm transfers at gun shows and any other venue, or the universal background check; strengthen and reinstate a ban of semi-automatic assault weapons and magazines over ten rounds; increase penalties for gun trafficking; reexamine and strengthen restrictions on armor-piercing ammunition; repeal an ATF appropriations rider; and strengthen that agency's authority to deny importation permits for fifty-year-old military surplus firearms that fall under the regulatory definition of curia or relic. Also involved in this was maintain fifteen thousand police officers, otherwise known as the COPS program; train state, local, tribal, and territorial law enforcement officers in responding to shootings. Here's an interesting one: allow the Center for Disease Control to conduct additional research on the possible nexus between video games, media images, and violence; improve incentives to encourage states to provide the FBI with prohibiting records on individuals who fall under the definition of mental defective; expand the national violent death reporting system to all fifty states, which only right now eighteen are participating; and improve school security. Go a little further down. The Senate debated but did not pass this legislation in April two thousand and thirteen. The House did not act upon similar legislation. Sad, sad, sad. I don't see any of those things that keep somebody who wants to have a gun legally and safely from not being able to do so. We've already had two incidences in Tarpon. In Publix was someone who was mentally incapable, and on December twenty-first, two eighty-five went down because someone had a gun who shouldn't have. Now, I know we're just a small community, but it's time everybody notify their reps and their congressmen, and maybe this board to pass some kind of resolution to start letting those who are in upper power that this needs to change. And one last thing I would say, thank you, Andy Parker, for taking this heartfelt journey. And through that, I found there's this, a group called Mothers Against, Mothers Demand Action Against Gun Violence, but you can Google it, Mothers Demand Action. And this is, was founded years ago by Shannon Webb, who also had someone tragically taken from her. So this is not new, but we need to get more people involved and hopefully turn this tide. Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you.
And there was another one killed at Delta State last night.
If another other public comments would go to our agenda. Just to note, item six B will be deferred till a later date. That's on our consent agenda. And we'll go to proclamations. This one is sickle cell awareness month. This reads proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, whereas health and welfare of our residents are vital, city, state, and national concern, and whereas hereditary blood disorder known as sickle cell anemia is a serious disease with no known cure, whereas sickle cell mainly affects African-American, but also appear in other ethnic populations, including persons of Greeks, Sicilian, Turkish, Italian, Hispanic, Caucasian, and East Indian ancestry; and whereas the Sickle Cell Disease Association of Upper Pinellas, Pasco, Hernando Counties, AIDS, individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease; and whereas the Florida community has not been made fully aware of this blood disease and its seriousness, whereas the Sickle Cell Disease Association and dedicated volunteers will be participating in activities to make residents aware of this disease. Now therefore, David R. H., by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and fifteen as Sickle Cell Awareness Month, and we have Mr. Henson here.
Are you? I know you have a presentation.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, stakeholders, citizens, on behalf of the Sickle Cell Disease Association of Upper Pinellas, Pasco, and Hernando Counties, I humbly accept this proclamation proclaiming September two thousand and fifteen as Sickle Cell Awareness Month. Sickle cell disease is, it defines a number of health blood disorders. If I may direct your attention to the screen, that is a, an actual diagram of blood cells under a microscope. Healthy red blood cells are round and smooth and soft. It carries oxygen through the blood. Unfortunately, people with sickle cell disease, after the oxygen is released, some of the blood cells mutate to that of a sickle shape. And if you see the prolonged one in between sickle cell and everything you need to know, that's a sickle blood cell. And so, without further ado, about maybe five-minute presentation.
Okay.
Again, my name is Anthony Henson. I am the outreach coordinator located at the CAP Center, Martin Luther King. And I am the outreach coordinator. Our target area is all areas north of Almerton, all the way up to Brooksfield. So if there is someone who has sickle cell disease, someone who would like for me to come and do a presentation, that's my, that's my job, and I'm available. There's a lot of territory, but that's, that's why I'm here.
Going the wrong way.
So, sickle cell disease is a group of inherited genetic disorders affecting hemoglobin. Now, hemoglobin is just a protein that's found in the blood. It's responsible for giving the blood its color, and it's also the mechanism by which oxygen is transported throughout the body. Okay, so here we have a diagram, illustration of the normal process of blood flowing through the body. The top illustration to the right is what normally occurs when people who don't have sickle cell disease, that's how the blood flows. Unfortunately, people who have sickle cell disease, after the oxygen is released, again, some of the blood cells mutate to that of a sickle shape, and when that occurs, there's blockage, and when there's blockage, there's problems. Okay, so a normal blood cell is this disc shape, easily flows through blood vessels and usually lasts about four months, one hundred and twenty days. People who have sickle cell, their blood is, becomes sickle in shape, hard like a piece of wood, and often get stuck when travels through the blood vessels. Usually lasts about ten to twenty days. Okay, what causes pain? Again, wherever there's blockage, there's pain. If there is, if blockage occurs in the head, the person will have a stroke. I was at All Children's today, and I had a client, he's seventeen now, but when he was fourteen, he had a stroke, and had another one at fifteen. So just imagine a young person that age having a stroke. So, but pain is caused by blockage, and not only pain, but tissue damage and organ damage. The most common types of sickle cell disease is sickle cell anemia, sickle cell SC, sickle cell anemia is most common. So when people think of sickle cell disease, they often think of sickle cell anemia. The second most common type is sickle hemoglobin C, and the third most common type is sickle beta thalassemia. And the symptoms for SS disease, sickle cell anemia, is anemia, first of all. Increased infections, tissue damage, organ damage, and recurring pain. And these symptoms are pretty similar throughout all of the conditions of sickle cell. Sickle, infections occur because of the spleen. The spleen is responsible for fighting infections. It's located on the left side of your rib, right underneath your heart. Oftentimes, sickle blood gets trapped in the spleen, and that's what causes infections because the spleen is not doing its job effectively. Sickle cell disease affects millions of people throughout the world, approximately seventy-two thousand people in the United States suffer from sickle cell disease. As Mr. Mayor pointed out, that it occurs in a lot of different race and nationalities. What sickle cell disease is not, there's a lot of misconceptions. Some people think it's leukemia. It's not leukemia, it's not cancer, it's not white blood cells eating up red blood cells. It's not infectious, you can't catch it, like you would a cold, it's not an STD, you have to, the person has to be born with it. Okay, how did sickle cell disease begin? Thousands of years ago, during one of the malaria epidemics in Africa, in order to protect itself, the, the body mutated, the genes mutated, to become sickle in shape. So even today, people who have sickle cell disease or the trait, they usually won't die from malaria. So that's a good thing, but unfortunately, it can, it could kill you if you're, if you're not careful. Okay, so it was the body's response to the malaria epidemic. And here is a origin distribution, those are not actual people, those are groups of people, but as people move around, the, they carry the disease with them. It was discovered over a hundred years ago by Dr. Herrick. Sickle cell trait is not the same as sickle cell disease. Person who have sickle cell trait, they are not, they don't have the disease, but they are considered carriers. So if you have two people who have the trait, and I'll briefly go into that with the genetics part, two people who have the trait, you need, even though neither have the disease, there's a one in four chance the child could have sickle cell disease. So we all receive two genes, one from each parent, for things like eye color, skin color, different features from our parents. We get different features from our parents through our, through our genes. So what happens is, person who have sickle cell disease, they have two sickle genes, and that's what they pass on, they pass one sickle gene to the parent, to the child. And a person who have the trait or normal red blood cells, all they can pass on is the normal adult hemoglobin or normal red blood cell. Okay, sickle cell trait is not an illness. Sickle cell trait cannot turn into sickle cell disease, it's not contagious, you have to be born with it. Sickle cell trait does not cause anemia. It's usually, you don't really have any problems, the person who have sickle cell trait don't usually have any problems, although if you experience conditions like high altitudes or you get too hot or too cold, you might experience what they call sickle sickness, and that's about approximately one in a hundred, that doesn't occur with everyone who have the trait. More often than not, you don't really know, the person with the trait don't know that they have sickle cell trait unless they have a special test. But the life expectancy and the quality of life of people with sickle cell trait are usually normal. Sickle cell trait can be passed down from generation to generation, just like sickle cell disease can, and sickle cell trait can be found among people of various ethnic and racial backgrounds, just like sickle cell disease. Okay, I wanna go into the genetics just to give an idea of how the disease is spread. The Punnett square, you may be familiar with it, it's used to determine the probability of what gene each parent will contribute to their child. We receive two genes, again, we receive two genes, one from each parent. So the Punnett square is used to determine the outcome of possible gene combinations. For instance, if you have two people who both have normal red blood cells, they receive two A gene, adult genes, from their parents, so they are considered, the child would have, the child would be, will be born with normal red blood cells. Okay, AA is normal, AS is trait, SS is sickle cell. Okay, so that's all the parents can pass down to the child, normal red blood cells. Again, two people, both have the trait, there is a fifty percent chance the child would be born with the trait, and there's a twenty-five percent chance the child would be born with sickle cell disease, and there's also twenty-five percent chance, a one in four chance, the child would be born with normal red blood cells. So that is a possibility. These are all possible combinations. Okay, so this is how it manifests, upper left quadrant is normal, upper right quadrant is trait, lower left quadrant is trait, lower right quadrant is where sickle cell disease can occur. Okay, so what happens if that, one parent have normal red blood cells, the other parent have sickle cell trait, there is a fifty percent chance the child will have normal red blood cells or the trait. There's a zero percent chance the child can be born with sickle cell disease. And this is how it manifests. Normal trait, a normal trait. Okay, dad has sickle cell disease, mom has sickle cell trait, these are getting more and more grave here. There's a fifty percent chance the child would be born with sickle cell disease, and a fifty percent chance the child would be born with sickle cell trait, zero percent chance the child would have normal red blood cells. Okay, so there's trait, sickle cell, trait, sickle cell, zero percent chance of normal red blood cells. Dad has sickle cell disease, mom has normal red blood cells. Every child will be born with sickle cell trait, zero percent chance of disease or normal red blood cells, because all that can do is pass on the sickle gene. And remember, one sickle gene and one normal gene combines to form the trait. So every child born to this couple will have the trait. Okay, if I think that's, well, last one, sickle cell disease, both parents have sickle cell disease, and every child will be born with sickle cell disease. Now, I will say that some parents, some, I have clients, both parents have sickle cell trait, and they have several kids, one, one couple in particular, one, one family in particular, they have two kids, both parents have the trait, and, sorry, all the kids, both kids have sickle cell disease. So they thought, well, since it's a one in four, because they knew about genetics, and they thought, well, since there's a one in four chance, we can have another child, and the child would be born with normal red blood cells, but that's not the case, it's just, it's just a roll of the dice, pretty much. And so, thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, to, to talk to you about sickle cell disease, because this community education is very important in helping to combat the spread of sickle cell disease. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, any questions? I forgot to ask if there are any questions, are there any questions from anyone?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
The next item we have was a presentation to the city from the Kathleen, Dr. Kathleen Monahan Foundation.
It's very exciting to be able to be here tonight to introduce the Kathleen Monahan Foundation Board Director, part of the board, most important, Xenon Post, who is our president, and Denise Warner, who has started a new business in Tarpon Springs, Florida, Florida Producers Realty, Inc., and she is our treasurer. And we have other members of the board who couldn't be here, Sally Parks, Betty Purchase, and Mandy Hutchison. We are, been working very hard, this board, to raise money to help with the renovations of this theater. And we recently, through, in the foundation, received a major donation in an estate from one of the most loyal members of our audience who recently passed away, Jack Hershawn, Smiling Jack. Anyway, they are here to present a check in the amount of fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, to help with the theater renovations. And Xenon, did you want to say anything?
Well, it was a... Our main interest of the foundation really is to improve the presentation and all the shows that the Performing Arts Center to the community is giving regularly, every month, every week, as a matter of fact. The Board of, the Board of Managers unanimously has approved to help the renovation, and by doing so, we decided to give the amount of fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars to the City of Tarpon Springs to help the renovation of our theater.
Okay. Can you all come over for a photo shoot, well, right in front of the, um, diet?
Fifty-three thousand?
I think Mr. Post would like to hand it over to the mayor and the board. We're gonna stage this here, they're not on stage, but, you know, this is, this is what I'm trying to, trying to do. I, I wanted to say that this is an extremely hard-working board, all of these people have lots of responsibilities, and I guess with the truism of you want something done, give it to a busy person, because they really are workers. And I wanted to let you know that fundraising continues for the renovations, because there's so much that needs to be done. The, the whole project of starting Tarpon Arts began really with the city manager, Blaine LaChorus, back in nineteen eighty-six, when he wanted to recycle the old city hall building and make it into a museum or cultural center, and move all the city offices over here. and make it into a museum or cultural center, and move all the city offices over here. So, he managed to save two historic sites and repurpose them. And that was, I think, one of the most major, um, recycling programs I've ever heard of. And now it's gone from one locate, one site to five, and lots of state money, and, um, lots of enthusiasm from all of our boards. And we really thank you for all the support, especially when we got that line item, trying to get the line item out of the state. That was really hard, but, um, together, we really did it. But when I mentioned the other fundraising, I just wanna let you know, we've got a big fundraising event, October twenty-fourth. Um, Beats on the Bayou, we have the Bust Up Band for dancing and listening to. They can play anything, they're great. We have the, um, Christopher Still is going to donate ten thousand dollars' worth of new artwork for the Heritage Museum. New lighting's gonna be installed, and, um, he will unveil that. We have Delectables providing dinner, wine and beer. I forget who's providing that. Um, and then, uh, John and Mary Kay Wilson are going to be our emcees. So, it's gonna be a great fun. Um, Teresa's already got that on your calendar, so, uh, you, you definitely have time to come. So, you'll have a good time. Anyway, we're raising more money through this event, uh, to continue with the renovations. Uh, this, there have not been any renovations in this theater combination, City Commission Chambers, since nineteen ninety-three. So, it's time, and we are planning to put lots of energy into this and have a good time doing it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you and the, uh, Foundation Board for all of your energy, efforts, and money, uh, to help us, uh, to renovate this, uh, and make it into a better, uh, cultural art facility, as well as the commission chambers. Um, any public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to item number three, is the alternate water supply facility update, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager, and I'm here tonight to provide a brief update on the reverse hospice water facility. I am very pleased to report that the plant has begun delivering water to our customers. As of this morning, we had delivered more than thirty-one million gallons of drinking water to customers over the last month or so. And we're currently providing around seventy percent of the city's water supply from the RO plant right now, as we continue to refine and optimize the treatment process and getting it dialed in. For example, the RO plant was shut down entirely yesterday as we load tested the new generator. So, it starts and stops, but, um, we're moving forward. We hope to be at a hundred percent consistently, uh, within the next few weeks as the injection well is completed and becomes available for operation. Uh, I wanted to take a moment during this update to, uh, address water quality. I understand that some customers have noticed a chlorine smell in their water recently, Commissioner. This is normal, and there are two main reasons for it. First, as of September eighth, water that we're purchasing from Pinellas County con- contains a different type of chlorine as usual, than usual. They have temporarily switched over from chloramine to chlorine. Uh, this is, this which is part of the county's annual, that's a routine system maintenance program that they do, and this will continue through September twenty-eighth. Uh, the water's perfectly safe. Second, second reason is to match the county's water quality. The city also switched from chloramine to chlorine, uh, so we wouldn't have, so we, we'd have consistent waters in the system. This, this switch can sometimes, uh, create higher-than-usual temporary chlorine demand in the system as the chlorine does its job of keeping the pipes clean. Often, the amount of chlorine entering the system must be higher, uh, higher initially, and then gradually reduced so that we can meet that goal. And that's, that's what's happening now. We are bringing it down now, at least with the city supplied water. So, customers can expect a gradual reduction in chlorine odors if you're experiencing, experiencing any over the next few days as the chlorine concentrations level off. City crews will continue to flush the water pipes to clear those lines out. And as always, I encourage anyone to contact the city with concerns about your water quality. Customers can call this number, nine-three-seven-two-five-five-seven during regular business hours, or after-hours and weekends, uh, two-three-four-four-nine-four-four. So, back to the RO update. Uh, work continues on the extension of L and R Industrial Boulevard. Power poles have been relocated, and, uh, replacement of Verizon's lines from the old poles to the new poles is the last holdup, um, before the old poles can be removed. We're expecting the contractor to have everything completed by the end of next month. Uh, next, at my last update, I mentioned that we are waiting on an Army Corps permit for the construction of our final piece of subsurface, sub-surface piping at the Duke Energy Canal. Um, we did finally get that permit last week, and the contractor has mobilized to complete that construction over the next few weeks. Our contractor, Wharton Smith, is still on the job, and over the next few weeks, we'll be working with them to finalize several items, including that outfall. This includes punchless items, uh, at the facility, landscaping, um, really just getting down to the finishing touches now. And we're looking forward to having a grand opening of the facility in the near future. And finally, I'm also pleased to report that we have satisfied all the requirements for the SWIFTMUD grant funding, and we've received all of the grant payments now. That's more than twenty million dollars. I don't have a big shiny check to, to take a picture with, but a big thank you to the Southwest Florida Water Management District for making this landmark project possible. And, uh, thank you for your time, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have any, uh, questions, but I really wanna thank you, uh, and SWIFTMUD. You can tell them that we definitely appreciate their money. But, um, this is a tremendous project that took a little while to get to the completion, but it's gonna be worthwhile, you know? Uh, any questions, uh, Mr. Banther?
Yes, uh, thank you. And I too am excited to have this plant on, uh, one, one hundred percent because we could, we could control the water better, it's just a better quality of water. I think we can only go up really from where we were at, as far as what we can drink and take in. Um, so you're saying, 'cause, I mean, it's, it's pretty bad at my house, I'll be honest with you. Um, and I've gotten complaints from residents, but, but it's very sporadic. I've talked to family in town that have no problem whatsoever, so it's not consistent, obviously. So, you're saying in the next few days, in the next week, maybe, those should level off, and there shouldn't be a noticeable chlorine smell in the water?
That's my expectation.
Okay. And, uh, so we are, so, you, so, you said, so about thirty percent of, of the, of the city is still on, uh, uh, the, 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 uh, the, uh, 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 county water, right?
Yeah, and then, you know, that's an average. Um, you know, you say you're, you're experiencing this sporadically. We are shutting down and starting up, like, we had to shut down for a full day to start the generator. So, during those periods, we're getting a hundred percent county water. So, on average, we're about seventy percent.
There's days where I, I don't smell it at all, but there's some times, like tonight, it was like, uh, in a pool. But, um, at least I'm sure it's clean then, so, that's good. But I appreciate it overall. I think it's, that's all the problem we have with a new plant, and that's extremely minor. And I'm very glad for the work you've done, and, and that boards before us took this on, and that we have. It just brings the whole full, full service city model in. And I'm excited to go see the plant myself, and for the Citizens Academy next year, for them to be able to see what this water plant is and how Tarpon's, um, making their own water. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just wanna say thank you for the update, and I'm excited that we're, we're gonna be at a hundred percent soon. I have not gotten any complaints or smelled chlorine myself, but thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, uh, public comments on this item? Seeing none, we go to satisfaction release of liens. Uh, again, I'll just tell you that, uh, item six B is, uh, being deferred, uh, which is Latin item, the Sponge Docks, until, uh, November seventh, two thousand and fifty. Uh, any item anyone wants to pull? Chair will entertain a motion?
Move for approval, second.
Any public comments on the CICIL agenda? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next, we go to orders and resolutions, item number nine, resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-seven, revising the equivalent stormwater unit, um, rate.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-seven, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, providing for the repeal of resolution two thousand and one dash seventy-four, revising the equivalent stormwater unit ESU rate according to a multiple-year schedule, providing for a future board review of such rate schedule, and providing for an effective date hereof. That's resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-seven by title only.
Just, I'll, just to start off, again, we've discussed this several times, and, uh, um, from the input of the board, brought this back to you. I will note, while it is a ten-year plan, as it states, if you'll notice on the second page, section three, where it states it'll be looked at a minimum of, of, in three years, it can be looked at every year if you want. Again, we laid out the projects over ten years. The real importance on here, when you see the third year, by the third year, we have to evaluate, is 'cause we need about a two-year lead time for the major projects. And a lot of the major projects we have are gonna start in year five. So, again, you can review this every year, you can review that. Uh, this says you have to review it within the three years to decide, again, if there's a case where you're, you're not gonna continue it or go on, then we have to revise the schedule of those major projects going. But, so really, the, the maximum you're doing tonight is the fifty percent increase, fifty cent increase for this year. And like I say, it can be looked at, you know, next year, uh, but it has to be looked by this resolution within three years to, to see where it is. And by that time, we'll see where the, where the other rates are, the water rates, the garbage sanitation rates, and all those things. And, uh, um, so while it, it projects out, 'cause obviously, as you saw, what was given to you, we have to project out for the next ten years what the projects are. You have a review of it, uh, yearly, and can make changes, stop it, increase it, decrease it, or whatever this commission chooses to do every year.
Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. Mr. Corus said everything I was gonna say, so if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I appreciate what the city manager just said, and, and the way it's worded in terms of section three. Um, I just wanted to get clarification when it says that it shall be reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, uh, not less than once every three years. Does, does that mean that it shall be done in the form of an item on agenda at a BOC meeting?
Yes, and, and, and should be voted on to continue the, and, and another vote to continue the, the, um, the chart as it goes, as it's going down, or modified, or whatever the commission decides to do.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think that this is, uh, a, 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 a great plan. I, far better than if you look at what Tampa had to do, and the news coverage of their meetings, that, that they were not happy at all. I think it was like a five-dollar increase or what have you, or they're still considering it. And I like the fact that it's reviewed, um, at least every three years, I like to see it less. But I assume we, 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 we can always do it less if we want to. Just by law, we have to do every, every three years. That, that holds it more accountable. So, and I, and I, and I appreciate all the work you, that you did for this, and all your modeling, which helped greatly, in that we can still be on, be, you know, um, on track for our projects. And I think this modest increase, what the people saw with the flooding in the beginning of August, I think this is, uh, a, a very good approach. Thank you.
Um, as I entertain the motion, I say that, you know, this is, uh, definitely gonna be important as we move forward. While nobody really cares about stormwater normally, uh, but when it rains, it becomes number one in everybody's book. And as long as we're proactive like this, we won't have a lot of the, uh, problems that Pasco continues to have in Hillsborough and the rest. So, thank you for your efforts and staff efforts, so. With that, uh, any, uh, public comments? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, next item is miscellaneous, um, and that's item number ten, appointment to Parks and Recreation Advisory, uh, Board. And I think we had to have a resignation, so we need to select someone to fill that vacancy. Yes.
I'll start. Uh, I recommend, uh, Jim Stavropoulos.
Oh, I'll, I'll second that. So, I'll vote for that, I guess.
Me too. I'll forth that.
Then we'll, we'll entertain a motion?
Motion to, I guess, recommend or approve Jim Stavropoulos for the Parks and Rec Department.
Second.
Any, uh, public comments on this? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, the next item we have is item number eleven, the scheduling of meetings for January. And we know because of the holidays and the rest, we need to make some adjustments. Uh, you wanna go over it, or?
Pretty much, this is an alternative schedule for January. I'm proposing, obviously, I'm proposing it now because for planning and zoning and advertising and everything, they're gonna need to know the dates of the meeting. We've done this several times. The main reason for this one, Epiphany coming the day before, our meeting the night before Epiphany. We've got the MLK holiday, that's a three-day weekend before our meeting. So, by changing it in January, it's purely an option, we can do it the way it is. But by moving it for just a month of January to the second and fourth, we avoid both, both those holidays in our scheduling and, uh, doing it. So, at times, depending on the calendar, we've done this in the past. So, it's just a proposal, uh, that we can, um, have so that, that, you know, we can start advertising the meetings and stuff, and know that, uh, for one month only in January, the meetings would be the second and the fourth, uh, Tuesday the month due to the holidays.
Any, uh, questions? Then, chair will entertain a motion?
I move that we schedule our two regular session meetings in January to be January twelfth and January twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Uh, any public comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. And that concludes our agenda. Chief?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney?
No comments?
City Manager?
Just in the way of preparation, um, and because we had a few hiccups with a temporary, um, condition we did, we will be in the process of the immediate, immediate future of securing the city hall. There's no doubt over the years, from police chief to here, um, we knew that sometime it was gonna come to that. It's not gonna be something some of the residents are gonna be happy with. They're used to having free rein, roaming and going. And in an ideal world and everything else, we'd be a community where we can do it. But unfortunately, as we have seen and we've heard tonight, we're not a community immune from everything that is going on. So, we will be working and evolving, um, a security system for any, or starting with security of the office during the days, and then progressing, um, we've got a regular committee, the chief and his people are on and stuff, even expanding as we go to meetings later on. But we're gonna start, and it's probably gonna evolve. The whole security is gonna evolve slowly over probably a six-month period. And it's just, you know, this first point of getting them used to coming into city hall and have some measure, um, and the evolution. I just wanna prepare everybody. You may be getting some calls and stuff as they see these, these going on. But unfortunately, it's necessary, and, uh, we've had, you know, things in the past where it needs to be. So, just, you'll be seeing that over the next six months or so, some added security and, and, uh, and, uh, security in city halls, so it's not, you know, anybody can roam anywhere at any time, so. I wanna prepare everybody for that.
Thank you. Uh, one question? Commissioner Banther?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
No comments, thank you.
No comments.
Mr. Tarpani? Oh, I don't have any comments. Uh, so we'll adjourn this at, um, seven, uh, what, eighteen? See?
Not bad.
I haven't, uh, haven't heard word about the Constitution.
There you go. You're welcome, thank you. Oh, I didn't know I was supposed to.
Freedom to roam?
Sure.